Fun. And I'd like to welcome you to the Jackson County Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, August 18th of 2020. With us today. I see Kelly, I see the newspaper and the radio KMAQ is on with us today. And Larry McDevitt, Jack Willie, myself, Mike Steinis are your county supervisors. You can't see me here well. Our executive assistant Luann is in the background. Lisa, our county auditor is with us today. And we'd like to welcome everyone. And our first on our agenda is Mike Clausen, our assistant county engineer. Good morning, Mike.
Morning.
Morning.
The first thing I have is a driveway permit for Kevin Carpenter. It's residential on 42nd Street, Fairfield Township, 21. Needs to cite this requirement, so we have to approve that.
Some move second.
Motion and second to approve the residential entrance permit for Kevin Carpenter on 42nd Street, Fairfield Township, Section 21 as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed nay. Motion carried.
Next, we've been looking for a used end loader. We had it in budget, in our budgets thus far. We've got, I gave you a spreadsheet with three of them. We have a case loader from Titan Machinery, 2011. It's got 4,293 hours on it. Their cost was eighty-six, nine, eighty. Twenty thousand per trade in price for it now, sixty-six, nine, eighty. There's a alt offer as a caterpillar, nine thirty M, stood twenty sixteen. Hours on that are fifty-six, forty-three. The cost is ninety-six, five hundred. The trade price is ten thousand. And with this one, we've got a set of forks to use with the end loader. But our forks will match up to the caterpillar. So you have to buy a caterpillar setup for that. And that was for seven thousand dollars for the forks. And that's for a total of ninety-three thousand, five hundred. Then there's Martin Equipment, John here, six twenty-four, so twenty sixteen. Hours are four thousand one hundred. Their cost is one point five, hundred and twenty-five thousand. Trade price is ten thousand. And the net cost is one fifteen. Our fork system will work with the one we have now, work with the case for the job here.
So your recommendation, there's quite a discrepancy in the years. What about horsepower and hours even? Yeah.
They're all three machines are pretty pliable, but everything except for the years, basically. I guess, yeah, the size, horsepower, operating weight. These are all the comparable machines in that class. So that's what you have to go on. But, yeah.
I'd just like to welcome Todd Kenny, our interim engineer also joined us this morning. But nice to see you, Todd. I guess we have a case now, two correct in Bellevue, you have a case?
We have several cases.
Yeah. Oh, so you're happy with them?
No.
Anybody have any questions to me? This is a no brainer, but.
It's amazing, the different prices.
It is, I mean, yeah, I mean, I get the cat. I get the cat to be a little higher, but the deer also is, I mean, this one's five years newer. The hours are lower.
No, no, it's a 2011, the other two are sixteens. Yep. It's five years older.
Just five years old. And does that pose an issue to you? That the, not with the hours that are on? Okay.
Might be a little better, there'd be a few less electronics on the old one.
No emissions, emissions lighting coming on every?
So your recommendation is the one from Titan?
We would recommend the case, yes.
Some move second.
Motion and second to approve the purchase of the case end loader as presented for the purchase price of sixty-six thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed nay. Motion carried.
Okay, and then just a couple of updates. Trader Construction is in the process of pulling the one eighty-eight street bridge out. Just about got it all the way out. So we'll get that cleaned up. And then we're going to start on the milk road, throw a bridge here tomorrow. So you've got the road closed up there, they closed it on Friday.
That's not helping my other part-time job at all. I have one there on that side. Go right back to Bellevue. I got one on the other side.
Just put a hard hat on and pretend you're.
I told, can we make him walk across the bridge or walk through the field?
You. You said the old water crossing.
Water crossing, yeah.
I guess that's all I.
Um, I guess I got a question. Or we may have some damage on one of our structures?
Uh, yeah, the new shed we built. On the east end, I don't know whether it was just the suction of the wind going by the building or what, but it pulled the steel on the inside about an inch. It bowled it in to the east away from inside of the shed. We've had Gary Dunn construction was down there and just did a preliminary look at it. He's gonna get up in the attic and make sure there's nothing broken and pull a sheet of steel off. See what's going on there and get it fixed. It's nothing major.
Okay.
That we know.
Because I kind of heard rumors of something different.
Chris Minnick, he's went down to look at it too.
Uh, he opened the damaged thing, but he said we'll wait till we find out for sure.
We certainly don't want things twisted tweak to the brand new building we're not in. That screws loose and.
Gary said he stuck a level on all four corners and everything is fine.
Garage storage is straight.
Yeah, yeah.
One east of town here that was north and south and it was fairly narrow and the wind just wrecked it. And nobody noticed it until they hit the opener to open the door and it got about halfway up and bind ended up. Tore the whole door apart. It was a mess, so.
Nothing like that happens.
Yeah, that's good.
I don't know if it got hurt. Actually, I heard they were there, working there.
Yeah, they were inside the shed.
Well, they were putting up the salt shed and.
Yeah, the salt shed is just about done. They had the steel there, they actually got the steel delivered right before the storm came. They got it inside the shed, so.
So there's no storm shelter places in those, is there?
No, I guess this, so yeah, like as long as Chris knows and I don't know, Todd, you got a chance to look at it sometime? I don't know what you think about it or whoever wants to look. I was going to drive down, look, I didn't get a chance to get down there, but not that I'm a construction guy that I know anyway, so.
I got a couple of pictures on my phone.
Well, I just don't want something patched to the point that it's not as good as new. All right. Any other questions for Mike? Todd, anything to, any input?
Yeah, I actually wasn't going to come into there, I was sitting over there talking to Mike. But I did, I got response from one, I think from the recorder regarding the 2080 agreement with the city of Oklahoma.
Yeah.
And I guess my only question was, if I make those changes, is it ready to send to the city?
For them to prove it, yeah. Yeah. Um, the changes were made by.
The changes and then I'll send it.
The changes were made by Sarah, right?
Well, she redlined it, I don't, the draft part needs to be updated with her changes and then I think it's ready. I was, that's the question, once those changes are made, is it ready to present to the city?
Absolutely, for them to prove it.
That's the only really thing I wanted to ask. And I think Mike was, we're gonna have some items for your work session next.
Okay.
Okay, and I have.
Awesome. Hope one of them is two-fiftieth, but.
I also had a request from Karen Ganser. I know she said she talked in the past when she lives on Iron Bridge Road. And since the road has been upgraded, she says the traffic is really flying by. And she really has asked in the past and is really concerned about her driveway. And she would like hidden driveway signs I had placed on both sides of her driveway. Because she said the cars come sailing up there. And she says, basically in the past, she hasn't gotten any success with that. And she really thinks that it would, if she said if nothing else, it would, it would calm her down some because she's always. And they raised her driveway, I think she said five feet. So it's higher than, well, I don't, I don't know what, all I'm repeating is what she said. But she's, it really concerns her, so she, she would like that. I guess I don't see any harm with doing it, but that's not my choice.
Do you have a traffic site policy?
We certainly have with site distances, right, Mike?
If it's four hundred and fifty feet of site distance or less, we'll put it between five hundred and four fifty, we'll put up ten.
What's supposed to speed? Okay.
Yes, more enforcement.
What we would do is we'd go to our traffic side policy, it's the same thing. There's not adequate site distance, we would, we would put up signs if there is adequate site distance. I think what the board says, so if it's a minimum, or I think what it is now is that you have to be a hundred and ten percent over the minimum. So you'd go out there with your siding rods and if you were right at the minimum site distance, we would still put up the signs. So if you're supposed to have four hundred and fifty, basically you'd need almost five hundred. You need a hundred and ten percent, otherwise we would cut the signs up. But if you're a hundred and ten percent or more of the minimum site distance, we'd say, look, there's adequate site distance.
Well, I think that's logical. So we, all we need to really do is see what the site distance is and come back with a conclusion.
So we can matter no one where together.
Sure.
Yeah. Still proceeding as normal on their damage merge?
Yeah, so the IAW is supposed to be working on calculations to determine if we need to lower the posting instead of. Their initial recommendation was just to drop it three tons without it being doing any calculations, which I didn't agree with. And Mike, it's too conservative, there's no need to do that. So especially when, if they do the calculations, that's going to be reimbursed as well. So might as well, if it's gotta be the posting lowered, we need documentation to show why.
Certainly. Sounds reasonable.
So if it lowers a rating, let's say ten town or something, can we get reimbursed for replacement part of it? Their percentage ever to a house?
Well, so that, that's the next, the other question is they're supposed to come up with a detail to repair. Okay, then, meaning IAW, then we take that to a contractor and get a price to do that. And then we, once we have that, we send that to their insurance company and say, hey, here's our claim for damage. And then that's the, that's the, where you're, to your question.
That's our number that.
That's our number that we get paid to fix that bridge.
Yeah, we fix it or.
Back to nineteen town or seventeen town or at least what it was.
Yeah. And then I guess the, down the road, before you repair it, the question is, do you just leave it posted at the lower level? Or the current level, if it doesn't need to be lowered, don't basically let it, don't really repair it. And just, if it's on your program to replace, then use that money that you were paid to repair it and then just put that towards the replacement.
Yeah. Yeah. That's quite a very sense. Yeah, that's expensive one.
Yeah.
Okay, we sure appreciate the input, the info. It's your new machine to work, Mike, and. Thanks, Todd. Okay, sorry about that. That sidestep. Next on our agenda are visitors or citizens, is there anyone here to address the board? Have questions for the board? If not, we will go to Ben, our zoning administrator.
Good morning.
Morning. Good morning.
Glad I could be with you guys this morning. I was a little worried since my wife's a teacher and she's been teaching online. I was hoping to be able to zoom if I still had to watch Arthur. He's five months old, but she got done earlier than expected and can manage. So maybe next time I'll, you know, bring a little prop yet, well, I was like, maybe I should or something. I'm sure he's a.
One of these officers would be glad to have him.
I, I walked around a little bit seeing who was it, we wanted to take fifteen minutes, but. It would be wonderful and I'm sure he would have enjoyed them. Um, anyway, so on the agenda, action, as far as the resolution of approval. I would get the two subdivision plans that I introduced last Tuesday. What's up first, I guess?
Whatever you want.
Um, well, let's just go with Snyder Industrial Park then. Snyder Industrial Park number two, it's a minor subdivision in Jackson County. This is property on the west side of Highway fifty-two, north of Bellevue proper, I guess. North of the city Bellevue sign there. Coming south on fifty-two, you can see on the right-hand side.
Yeah.
So this is zone M two general industrial. So, you know, what it's currently being used for is fine. A future plan would probably be, I think, for Brian Steinis to put up some kind of structure that would, you know, go with his logging business there and possibly a house down the road. Both are allowable uses, the M two general industrial. Logging is a permitted principal use. And then a dwelling for a foreman or boss or whatever caretaker, the property would be an allowable accessory use. Provided they have two thousand four hundred square feet of open space, which there is, I think, over six acres on lot. Two, I believe. Yeah, so, um, you know, that should be more than enough for a septic system and all the other permanent requirements existing highway entrances. So, um, I guess I'd appreciate a motion on approving that.
Motion to approve. A motion and second to approve the Snyder Industrial Park number two subdivision as presented. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed nay. Motion carried.
All right, our second one there, let's see, this would be for Keppin Acres. So we've got lot one of Keppin Acres, eight point one seven four acres. Lot two is four point seven four three acres. I guess just to summarize some discussion last weekend. Lot two is a proposed new dwelling for that, probably within the next, maybe as soon as this fall or early next year, hopefully. There is an easement to over lot one, so access is provided. They've already got approval from the state of Iowa for using a driveway for another residence. So you can see the squiggly arrows there showing which way water would bring off the property. Lot two showing most of the things drop off, most of the water will drop off to the northwest and east. So, you know, minimal concern as far as this, plenty of room for a septic system. We've already been working with Kimberly on that matter. So no concerns here from our department. So again, I appreciate a motion to prove that as well.
Some move second.
Motion and then a second to approve the Keppin Acres subdivision as presented. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed nay. Motion carried. I did visit that site and, yeah, there are no issues there that. Yeah. You won't even see it back there, I don't think.
Yeah. Okay, on to, I guess, more, you know, something I think that as I know Mike did some calls about this from Oakdale, Lees Lake. So just, I'll probably be heading up there after this meeting to, you know, take some further action. Last Monday, I delivered a nuisance violation, so I've been August tenth to the board president. I had several calls over the summer from, you know, several persistent calls asking us to take some action on this pavilion building. You know, that's apparently needs to be replaced. They have discussed this at their board meetings back in 2017. There's a temporary fix to support this more. They put trusses, I think, put some two-by-eights or two-by-ten's on the corner posts to reinforce it. In their view, it's a temporary fix, but they have discussed replacing this at a future date. You know, since then, after discussions with several residents out there. You know, it, it does seem like, you know, I'm stepping into a somewhat of a, I guess, a political process as far as, you know, what property owners associations can get into from time to time. It seems there was a feeling that they needed something from us to go forward with demolition. I don't know the ins and outs of their procedures as far as, you know, what it would take to demolish.
So it was stood last week's storm, correct?
According to the board president, they didn't really get hit by it, which, you know, I guess twenty miles away, it's possible. You know, we had enough damage here, but, you know.
I guess the other question is on the private property, are we in charge? Or we have the authority to do that?
We did for Delarm for his barn.
Um, yeah, I mean, there is, so our nuisance ordinance said, it says any structure, you know, either any structure can be considered a nuisance either due to inadequate maintenance, disrepair, dilapidation, abandonment. You know, or general unsafe, you know, nature of it. You know, I probably, you know, could go up there and start kicking the post and then most likely wouldn't fall down.
So whose call, is it your call to say that this building's not safe?
I guess it would be, you know, but just looking at it, you know, I think, you know, it definitely takes a second look. So I'm gonna go do that and probably.
I mean, I, my own opinion is that you need a professional contractor or somebody.
I certainly, I certainly couldn't tell you.
Oh, well, I could go up and say, well, yeah, that don't look good to me, but who am I to say? You know, I have no.
No look at it.
Designation to say good or bad, but we might need more than one opinion, yeah.
Sure. And opinions can vary on that. I mean, some can say, well, I'm sorry to fall down. Yeah, but you could fix it too.
Yeah.
I mean, I think one of the offset is, you know, where do you want to go with it for anyone?
I think there's contention up there as far as to say, we want a new pavilion. Or we want it, we want a new building? Or do we want this? You know, I mean, we talked about Taj Mahal's before, you know, I've heard that mentioned. We want, certainly want a structure, they certainly want a structure, but I still think it's in the hands of that private entity to say.
Absolutely, they're the ones that are gonna have to pay for it.
Yeah, and I think.
You know, I think that's where the contention's coming from.
Yeah.
I mean, they're taking down a twenty thousand dollar shelter and they're putting up a.
Two hundred.
Two hundred thousand.
Three hundred.
Center.
Well, I guess Larry, if you're willing to go up there, what, when do you think, do you think we could do that sometime this week?
Sure. I don't know what it's for you. We have a little time at this afternoon.
Okay. Um, wanna say like, let's see, would two-thirty work?
Yeah, I got a meeting at four, but that's okay.
Oh, yeah.
If you're there by two-thirty, a half hour will go a long ways.
Yeah, so, um, I mean, I don't know if it'll take that, that long to really assess. But, you know, we can take a look at it and I don't want to rescind that until, you know, we're a hundred percent sure. But, you know, as far as, I guess, what they want, what the objective is, what they want to do, like.
Yeah.
You know, in general, like if you're a, you know, if you're a subdivision, you're a homeowner association and you wanna, you know, make things nicer, I can certainly, I guess, understand that sentiment then. But, you know, everybody should be involved in that, in that process. I don't think they need an hour say-so to take that action. But, you know, you think about it, we saw Labor Day coming up. You know, if it's, if it's not unsafe, then, you know, there might be, you know, people want to use it. But they need to take that own decision, say, you know, do people make reservations to use it? If it's, you know, if they think it's something that needs to come down, they should say, you know, they should probably take that action themselves and say, well, we're not gonna let anybody have, you know, picnic or a birthday party or whatever.
I think he'll know better once you.
Well, what's the news to say that they cannot use the structure?
Yeah, it's basically, you know, I put some tape, some paper on the outside.
You guys check it out and then we'll.
You know, I was, I guess, expecting after the radio, like, you know, figure twenty miles away from here. And, you know, we had plenty of trees, winds come down, but, you know, apparently we didn't get hit at all. If it had somehow hit the back, then I'd definitely have exactly.
So I also had a couple of things put in my ear to say that we approved the Stockholm subdivision. Here, how long ago did we do that?
Quite a while.
It was about a month ago, we, we passed a resolution.
And is that filed, is that finished? Is that, I've heard there's some grumblings that.
Not yet, I will, I will get to work on that and get.
Because the attorney is kind of upset that it hasn't been done.
I understand that.
Okay, anything else?
Um, no, not gonna ask, so.
All right, Ben.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I'll just meet you there at two-thirty.
Two-thirty, okay.
Lisa?
This morning, I need a motion to approve the minutes of the August eleventh, twenty twenty board proceedings as written by auditor Smith and authorize publication in the.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the minutes of the August eleventh, twenty twenty board proceedings as presented. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed nay. Motion carried.
Motion needed to approve and authorize the auditor's office to issue warrants in the publication of the claims listing in the amount of a hundred and eighty-nine thousand, two hundred and fourteen dollars and sixteen cents.
Some move.
Motion and a second, I just about got to, I got in there before I got the second.
I had a question on, I can't think of what it was. There was just one company that I wasn't familiar with. Give us some stuff from, I'll look at it. It's okay, I just, it's not.
I had a couple of questions, but I got them cleared up from Shelley earlier, so. All right, we're back to the claims. I have a motion and a second to approve the claims in the, in the amount of a hundred and eighty-nine thousand, two hundred and fourteen dollars and sixteen cents as presented. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed nay. Motion carried.
It was about some tires, recat tires.
They were rather expensive tires, but they were, I should have probably asked Mike.
A half inch, yeah.
Guess there were, or an analog, there was three thousand dollars or thirty-five hundred dollars.
But I wasn't familiar with the company either.
Harry's.
Harry's Farm Service.
Yeah, it's in. We do a lot of business with them. We do a lot of business with them, actually.
Yes.
Okay, well, we got that cleared up.
Motion needed to approve resolution number seven hundred and sixty dash zero eight dash eighteen dash twenty twenty, certifying delinquent leisure lake sewer assessments to the county treasurer for property tax collection as filed in resolution, what, four page two eighty-four?
Some move.
Second.
A motion and second to approve resolution number seven six zero dash zero eight dash one eight dash twenty twenty for certifying delinquent leisure lake sewer assessments. And am I correct in saying there was only five or six of them, was it? Oh, that's the list.
Total amount was five thousand, seven hundred and seventy-four dollars and eleven cents.
Well, let's certainly pass that resolution and so we can collect them. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed nay. Motion carried. Thank you, Lisa. Uh, Lynn is not here. Luann? We won't make you call, we'll just have you come and. Looks like you got a page full. Probably for you.
There were pictures of the grand chair.
Those are available on request, so. All right, calendar this week, ten o'clock this morning, Jack is going to take a short break from the meeting and go join the DHS, the Iowa DHS council meeting, it's initial one, so we'll work around that. At one o'clock this afternoon, I was supposed to have a meeting on the EFSB grant that has been postponed to August twenty-eighth. At four P M. this afternoon is the Coca-Cola River Watershed Management Authority Executive meeting by Zoom for Larry. And at six-thirty tonight is the Conservation Board meeting in Hurstville, also for Larry. Wednesday, August nineteenth at ten A M. is the Northeast Iowa Agency on Aging meeting by Zoom for myself. And at one-thirty that afternoon is a Jackson County Security Advisory Committee meeting. It says Zoom, and it's set up as a go-to meeting for Mike and for myself. Thursday, August twentieth, at eight A M. is a Governing Board Finance Committee meeting by Zoom for Jack. At nine A M. is a Housing Trust Fund meeting by Zoom for Mike. And at six o'clock that night is a Limestone Love's R C and D meeting by Zoom for Jack, which I think is not going to happen because actually that has changed for the twentieth because at five-thirty is going to be an Operation New View Finance Committee meeting for Jack. And then at six-thirty is the regular Operation New View hit cat meeting for Jack and for Larry.
They canceled from last week because of the storm and sea around.
No power, yeah.
No power, no anything.
And they're still there. Yes.
It's gonna be a while, yeah.
They were showing pictures this morning on the weather channel, like the schools that were damaged with the worst of and all that, so. were damaged with the rots off and all that, so.
My son's, my son's fiance has a relation, her mother and her grandmother live out there and it gets worse than the pictures say.
Diane works at the Veterans Home, four to five million dollars in damages, since all the trees are just, just tore the whole place apart.
If you have a chainsaw and a skid loader, you wanna make a living for a couple weeks, there's some money to be made, I'm just saying.
Yeah, they said that Jones County Park too, anybody with a, a saw on it, truck or whatever, come, start hauling, yeah.
There was even a thing over our local cable, um, requesting anybody that had time or the equipment, if they would go to Marion and help.
Oh, okay.
Gave the phone number and.
I got ten, twelve, twelve dump truck loads of wood in the last, I'll make a few days.
I'm surprised you didn't get more than that.
I've heard there was electric companies from overseas coming and helping.
Iowa wasn't the only one that got hit.
No.
It went for almost eight hundred miles.
Well, we certainly pass our thoughts and onto them and hopefully they can recover and we can join together and get back to normal out there.
Amen.
Yeah, I mean, they, they have nowhere to get gas, they didn't have no power, they didn't have ice and, you know, tried to put a truckload of ice down Sunday morning too, we had a group take some down and they got drop-off spots and stuff, so.
They, they were supposed to start school, I think, next week, and their school buildings are all, it have huge problems and they have no internet or, or power in places, so they can't even do it virtually, it's crazy. Okay, Friday, August twenty-first at ten A M., Jack has a workforce office hours meeting by Google Meet, and then at noon, he has a C E O office hours by Zoom. Monday, August twenty-fourth at nine thirty, Jack will be on K M H U's Just Talk, that's a half hour later than you usually be on there, so. And from one to six that afternoon is your, um, Mississippi Valley Workforce Training in Muscatine, that's still going, I don't know how Muscatine is doing, so.
Well, I haven't heard anything different.
Our next regular meeting will be Tuesday, August twenty-fifth at nine A M. And I have, um, no other business for you today except to say that I will be under the office again Thursday, Friday and Monday if Shelley doesn't kill me first. If it wasn't my plan, I'll still be out of the office, so.
Well, you know, you could do the same thing that, um, we told them. You could bring your grandson down here and.
You know, that's, that's one of my nightmares, Jack, to bring him down here. I think he would put him in his own baby-proof house, much less down here, so.
I do have a student orientation tour tomorrow at nine thirty.
Okay.
Students are coming to the water trails. W M A and the COVID Watershed Authority.
Great.
Take a look at our river and see if they can make things a little better or whatever, so, that'll be good. Help with their plan. It's quite interesting, they go from here to Cascade.
Monticello, did I hear too, yeah? Did I hear Monticello too, I think?
Yeah, Manchester Fish Hatchery and pretty much all the way up the river and just, Tim Bick and Shirley Hamlock's and three thirty. So, that'll work, huh? Be interesting, then I'll be working on for four or five days, different plans and how to make a water trail and promote it, so, it's exciting, the extra input from young people.
That's, that, that is gonna be exciting to hear what they say.
Or what's that?
Right, anything else? Great.
Thank you, Luanne. Lynn has arrived.
Yes.
Good morning.
Good morning. Here again is a follow-up to the monthly regional mental health services, this is the Governor of Iowa, and I will attend yesterday afternoon. Just a few highlights and Jack, feel free to add in whatever you want.
Some of it I can't say on the air.
Highlights, you say highlights?
Well, sure, sure, they're good things.
Okay.
We started the fiscal year with a fund balance of, uh, two point seven million dollars, so that was a pretty good place to be, I guess, and, um, expenses for the month of July were pretty routine. We're still, David Farmer, the region's fiscal agent, is still, um, will be tracking monthly cash flow for several reasons, for obvious reasons of cash flow and, you know, for me to be able to pay bills, but also keeping an eye on the projected fund balance at the end of this fiscal year and June thirtieth of twenty-one, because unless there is a change in legislation, um, in the twenty twenty-one session, the fund balance is supposed to be at forty percent, from what I understand, and with projections, and these are so early into the fiscal year, obviously after only one month of experience of expenses, but now it looks like we might be just a hair over that forty percent, I think he said forty-two, forty-three percent.
We've been through this before, we just go and go out and spend money to get rid of it, that's, that's, that's the problem here.
But we're pretty close to the forty percent, so it wouldn't take many very big expenses and knock on wood.
You know what we did the last time, we, we played by the rules.
I know.
Got our fund balance to where it was supposed to be and then they changed the rules.
Yeah, yeah, I know, um, I guess.
And we were the only region that played by the rules.
Yeah, I know, I remember that.
And on the one hand, I guess I hope we don't experience any.
Yeah.
Major expenses, but Jackson County's been very fortunate to not have anyone need to go to the mental health institute, for example, that's always kind of a big one that's. So that's kind of where the region's finances are at this point, uh, the check is in the mail, in fact, I think it actually arrived in the CARES money, so this is the federal money that has been sent to the state of Iowa and Governor Reynolds is, uh, has distributed thirty million dollars amongst the mental health regions and ten million to mental health providers and ten million to substances disorder providers. So the management team will be meeting today to discuss a little bit more about, um, how we might move forward with making that money available to providers of, uh, services funded through the regions, uh, required services. As of this point, it needs to be spent by December thirtieth of twenty twenty, however, there is another act that is being discussed out in Congress in Washington, D C, called the Heels Act, and if that moves forward, there is the potential, one of the items in that act as of right now would be an extension of the deadline to use the CARES Act money. So this money is in addition to the CARES Act funds that the counties are receiving, there are multiple facets of CARES funding. We will see, we, the, our region received about two point five million. As of right now, it's sitting at the region level, I don't believe there's been a firm determination of whether or not that needs to be further distributed to each of the five counties on a per capita basis, so.
So with that money, that our budget is what, at about twelve million for this time? So with that addition, that kind of gets us close to where we need to be.
Well, we can only spend it on things that they say we can spend it on. We can't just do, can't put it in the pot and just spend it for services, it has to be, uh, the coronavirus has to be the key part of that.
Yeah, it can't be put into the general.
Coronavirus expense that we would incur.
Results of the virus, so. Um, you know, there are some regions apparently are looking at putting it into some kind of large trainings for people to, you know, areas of mental health topics that have increased in their presence because of the virus. Some providers have incurred additional expenses, obviously, because of the need to sanitize and buy additional equipment, technology is a possibility. Because of things being done remote, not everybody has access to a computer and staff maybe don't have computers that go into the homes.
Well, that could be used for that.
Yeah, if they have lap, that's what I understand, so if they would have a laptop that could go in and help somebody in their home facilitate, maybe a meeting with a doctor or a meeting with, you know, a medication prescriber.
So I guess, I'm just thinking out loud, so school's about to start, and if there's other issues that come up with some of these children, uh, having issues, I should say, um, can it be used for something like that, does that all fall back to the school system? Or can, can they interject into, uh, you know, if we need some counseling or if we need some, you know, things like that first?
I think it could all be considered, I think the distinction that has to remain very clear would be that what is being requested is not something that typically should be covered under the education fund versus the mental health services fund, I think that's, there's some pretty clear delineations I think we have to make, and the other challenge we have is, you know, we only have, what, five months or four months?
Yeah, that's crazy. Well, I would think that could almost be extended too, if they thought, you know, if they have.
Well, the deadline is standing. Would ask to do that.
Otherwise, they don't issue it, or you have to give it back, or?
Give it back, the money in, in its.
Which makes sense, I mean, yeah, if you don't need it, it's one thing, but.
This is federal money, it's federal money, so that whole deadline of when it has to be spent by is beyond the control of the governor or anybody locally, and so currently that date is firm on December thirtieth.
Well, we have representatives and senators that should have some say. Locally?
Well, and I think though, you'd have to go to your, um, U S senators.
Right. But we do have some of them local.
Um, and that is where in this Heels Act, and I don't know what that acronym stands for, I forgot to look that up, I know I've seen it, um, within that act, which is being debated right now, that potentially would extend the deadline for the money spending of the CARES Act, so. And I know Jack will have to leave here shortly, but the only other thing, unless there's other discussion on the CARES money, um, one other topic that was discussed yesterday was, um, rate setting for providers that provide similar services. So at the July Governing Board meeting, the chairperson can back establish two committees for the region, and both of those committees are meeting now in August, and one of them is a rate setting and contract, um, committee, the other one is a finance committee, which will discuss and provide a recommendation on how to continue to move forward and how the, uh, financial structure is of the region, should we continue to pay bills at the county level, or should there be a pooling of funds, um, those kinds of things, so we will see, what those two committees are determined to do, Jack is actually on the committee that will discuss the financial structure of the region, and I'll be sitting on the committee that will discuss the rate setting and contracting. So I don't know, Jack, if there's anything else you'd like to add?
I think you covered it well.
Okay, so, I'll see you next month. Any questions?
All news is good news, yeah.
There you go.
I, I do have a question, I, I did see that you're discussing contracts, is that correct, is that, did I see Lori send out a bunch of contract things?
Yeah, those are the contract renewals.
Yeah.
For the providers.
And that's all going well?
That was all a part of the discussion yesterday.
Okay.
What's the determination, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Was a huge part of the discussion yesterday.
A lengthy part of the meeting, um, what was determined by the board prior to July first, the new fiscal year, was that there would be no rate increases for any providers in F Y twenty-one, and during F Y twenty-one, would be discussion in terms of how to, uh, set rates going into F Y twenty-two, and should there be cost reporting that's done, that's taken into consideration as rates are set, should there be uniform rates amongst, I'm gonna just use mental health centers as, as an example, they all provide similar services, they bill it to insurance companies and the same billing codes, should all the mental health centers in our region have the same rate for the same service? Um, there is a sentiment on the part of some governing board members that yes, if you go in and have a visit with a medication prescriber, that should cost the same at Hillcrest as it does at Bridgewater, one, your French and Davenport, Robert Young in Muscatine, or Abby Sundar in Cedar County. Um, I, and I, that is the committee that I, I am assigned to sit on.
Lucky you.
Yeah, because I ha, I'm gonna be very honest, I, my, with my experience in working in a mental health center for a number of years, I have a different perspective on how those rates are established, and that is not necessarily the same as the governing board members, so I'm not sure that, um, it is quite that easy to attribute the same cost for that unit of service to one agency versus another, without looking at what goes into the cost within the agency.
And that was my point yesterday.
Yes, you did, yeah.
I, I, I guess I, and I, as I said to the girls this morning, when we're talking before we started, they asked me how the meeting was, and I said, you know, my, my example was, you look at the city of McOcota, and if you called all of the hair cutting establishments in McOcota, you would probably find two that charge the same thing. You have to look at what your salaries, what your heat, what your rent, what your, what your.
Experience.
Debt is, all of that, you also have to look at your staff and what their credentials are, not everybody has the same credentials, you have to pay them at a, a different rate, so when they say that you can't take anything but the service into effect, that's wrong. All these things play an important part in establishing what your rate is so that you can keep your doors open, and that's one of the reasons, again, in center clause, because they couldn't keep the rates at what it needed to be, um, because they wouldn't be reimbursed for it.
Right, I, I, and I agree with that a hundred percent, Jack, and that's.
I was just livid yesterday, needless to say.
Pardon me?
I was just livid yesterday, needless to say.
Yeah, um, and you know, community mental health centers and all of those agencies that I've listed, providing services in the respective counties, community mental health centers are credentialed by the state of Iowa under Iowa Code Chapter twenty-four, but the mission of those agencies, albeit now is, it is a business that provides that service, the mission of that particular type of service is a little bit different than even your private practice psychiatric services, for example, they are intended to serve a population that maybe can't get services elsewhere if they're not insured, they were intended to provide services to make sure that everyone in the community had access to mental health services, so with that comes a different rate than what Medicaid, and this is what some of the pushback is, so you look at Medicaid rates are the same for every agency of light cloth, so every community mental health center gets paid the same rate. And I get that, but I also have a belief that there is a difference in, we as a region have to still take a look at what the cost is for that agency to be able to keep their doors open.
There's a cost for doing this.
Business, and we all know that Medicaid and other insurances do not necessarily pay at a rate that will afford that agency the ability to keep their doors open. So I think there is an obligation on the part of a funder like the region to do what we can to make sure all those agencies are able to continue to be available to the residents of our county and our region.
Just makes our task harder if they're not there.
It does, um, the expenses to the county and to the region only grow if we are not there to help in the beginning of someone's mental health needs. Hospitalizations are more expensive, placements and facilities are more expensive. So, um, yeah, it, it could be quite a spirited conversation, I think.
I don't envy you.
Yeah, I'm not really quite sure of how to develop the discussion on, to advocate from the perspective.
Well, it's logic, you know, to say you're gonna have to take your expenses into account, I mean, we all have to do that when we're budgeting, that's, that's no different than.
And there is a belief, I think, on the part of some board members that you don't have to do that, you shouldn't have to do that, that the cost should be the same, no matter what the input expenses are, the revenue to be gained should be the same.
That's right.
Well, each area is gonna be different also.
Certainly is.
Not according to some of the members of that board.
Yeah, you know, and, and, um, the workforce plays into this as well.
Absolutely.
Yeah, what's the workforce that's available and what do we need to pay to have workforce available in more rural areas?
It's no different than Cedar Rapids, but they're paying for loggers right now to come out there with a skid loader and a chainsaw.
Yeah, pretty big numbers.
Exploded to the point where, yeah, four, five, ten times the amount they'd normally look for, but they're paying it.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, but if, if demographics are gonna surely show that expenses are higher in different areas to say. Yeah, you know, but if demographics are going to surely show that expenses are higher in different areas to say.
And how will we ever get hospitals, for example, to agree to the same for the in, for an inpatient bed or a psychiatric inpatient bed? I mean, realistically. Yeah, exactly, that just won't allow me either. And yet it's important that we have these services available to the residents of our county, so.
We're mandated to.
Yes, we are.
By state law.
Yes.
And if we don't, we end up with more in our prison system and.
Well, that's the other thing.
It's just a whole vicious circle.
It is, yeah. So, yeah, so that, that'll be interesting, we're supposed to have reports back for.
Well, good luck.
Yeah, thanks.
We're we're completely okay with you. Doing your thing here. Complete. Complete confidence, Lynn, so. Thank you. All right. Luanne, we did you already, I can crush you off? And what we're gonna have to do is wait a few minutes.
So how do we, Jack, you need to be, your meeting at ten, this public hearing's at ten.
He's gonna be slightly late for something.
I know it is, I'm hoping the public hearing doesn't take long, you know, I'm I'm gonna go use Clark's old office for that meeting and then come back in. So hopefully.
So you could set two, two meetings at once, right?
And we could pull one of these up for the two, another meeting, if you want to mute it. At this time, Lisa, we would take a short recess.
Somewhere there is.
I am, so at this time, we will reconvene our meeting and I have ten o'clock on the button. So we will open the public hearing on proposed ordinance two nine two dash ATV slash UTV. Is there any comments? Questions from the public? I have a question for Sarah. Somebody unmuted her.
Try this.
Hey, you are? Good morning, Sarah.
Good morning.
I'm in section. Section five, no, section six, the last line in section six, all fines are also subject to crime services surcharge under code Iowa Code. Could you please explain that? I just want to clarify to the residents that when we pass this ordinance, that if a citation, correct me if I'm wrong, if a citation is issued against the ordinance, then the county retains the fine, is that correct?
Correct, so the fine goes to the county, but if whenever any municipality or county creates an ordinance that has a fine, it is also subject to the crime services surcharge and court costs. Both the crime services surcharge, which is fifteen percent of the fine, and court costs, which I think are now fifty five dollars, are kept by the state. So the fine amount comes to the county, the surcharge and the court costs go to the state.
Thank you. Steve or Steve, do I have anything to say? I did have a couple of questions that were emailed in this morning. Would the Jackson County Sheriff's Department guarantee full enforcement of the ordinance and holds the users accountable? Well, I I guess you can answer that if you like, I think we have been doing that with the resolution that we have in place. We did report, uh, last week, I believe you said there was sixteen?
No, there were, I think, eight.
Eight.
Eight or nine calls for service and out of those calls for service, there were four citations generated. So it's, it it's it's been enforced, it will continue to be enforced, but, you know, under certain circumstances and situations, if they weren't, if wanting, you know.
And and I went through this this past weekend, well, somebody called me and had a complaint about one, but it was a week ago from Sunday. I said, well, we need to call law enforcement if there's an issue while it's happening and we will take care of it and we will patrol.
If we don't get a phone call, we don't know.
And we will patrol them areas, so we're not letting this go by. And the next question was, would there be statistics kept? And I think you just answered that, we know exactly how many violations and how many calls we have, so yes, there will be. Is the speed limit, is the speed limit, thirty five speed limit the maximum allowed on all roads and these vehicles will able to use? And that, I think that question's also been answered, that that is the max and that's why we changed the wording in that slightly, so that is the max. I did hear one comment that says, well, if you're only going thirty five and I come over to Hill at I'm gonna, they said more than fifty five, but the speed limit's fifty five, so if you come over at fifty five, I think you still have time to react to to that. Yeah, yeah, and that was a point, a comment that was made, that some of these new tractors go thirty five mile an hour, I said, well, we want to be as safe as we can and that's why we're posting it that way, you know? I guess the other question was, why doesn't the county require registration? So the registration, Steve, comes from the DNR, as it is now, and we have tried to do a license plate thing and the DOT got highly involved and kind of shut the doors on you, as I understand it, any other comments to that?
Initially, this had been three years ago, we we tried that. I think Terry and myself came here to the board supervised with those, whatever. We went ahead and included them, the DOT as part of that. And first of all, the DNR come and said that, that is not a criteria of those, of theirs to have a license plate on that. DOT then came on in and said that they really didn't want, want to get involved with that because once a license plate gets put on that, then that is a DOT. And then you get the DOT kind of trying to grab dollars out of this thing with DNR and then they said, so we just washed our hands on that.
Thank you, that's all the questions, I have any other comments or?
Yeah, if I can, Don Swinker, I just want to throw in the city's two cents in talking with Brad Coranda and since we adopted our resolution, I think it was back in November, he said we've had no complaints or troubles. We've opened up all the side streets and we've mirrored our resolution to match the county hours and we're looking forward to, if you guys proceed with this ordinance, to follow through, follow suit and do the same.
Thank you, Don, for the input.
And a side note, I've had, in the course of the November till now, I've had about thirty or forty residents come up and thank me personally for getting this through, cause it's been utilized quite a bit and it's, I think it's a needed thing to help promote tourism, especially in this new time where there's not a lot of vacations and whatnot going on. People are staying a little bit more local and doing things more outdoors, I think this is a key thing for tourism, so that's my two cents, so thank you.
Again, thank you for input, anyone else have any input? If not, I will ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
Some.
Motion a second to close the public hearing on proposed ordinance two ninety two. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay, motion carried. Discussion possibility, action or proposed ordinance two ninety two.
Make the motion to approve.
Have a motion a second to approve ordinance number two ninety two dash ATV slash UTV as presented and discussed for many months. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, nay, motion carried. Thank you. Is there any other business before the board? We, we have a work session.
Want to ask Steve if, after our closed session, it says possible action regarding pending litigation. Are we going to make any decisions today or are we just listening?
Well, that was, we discussed that last week. I mean, it was the board's, the consensus of the board to get together and have this on, on today's date to discuss his.
What his, what his suggestions are.
Correct.
Yes.
Yeah, so I don't think there's gonna be any action, it's just basically an information.
Okay, well, we didn't know if we should adjourn this meeting or if we were going to have to reconvene after our closed session.
Because then we have to start another Zoom meeting.
Yeah, so there, I don't believe any decisions are going to be made, it's just to inform the board.
We didn't think so, but we, I I would move we adjourn, second.
A motion a second to adjourn, again, we do have a closed session at eleven AM. Other than that. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Jack has to get to another meeting, motion carried, meeting adjourned. Have a good day.